Good evening. Are you running, Alex?
Yes.
Good evening, I'm David Assad, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. At 6:00 PM on Thursday, May 16, 2019, we are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This is a meeting of a local public body and as such is subject to provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, commonly known as the Open Meeting Law. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier, the lady to my left is recording an audio version, and Fall River Government TV, Alex Mello, is recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening are permanent members from my left to right, John Frank, Secretary, James Corkin, Attorney Carolyn Morissette, the Vice Chair of the Zoning Board, Attorney Gregory Brilliant, and alternate member Dan DuPere. The gentleman to my immediate right is William Roth, Director of Planning for the City of Fall River. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered and properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, is amended?
Yes.
I declare the May 16, 2019, regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I'm remiss in not introducing Patty Aguirre, sitting next to Brittany Farrier, who's here overseeing the duties of the recording secretary, because she may be here in the June meeting. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abudders, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River zoning ordinances. The newly adopted City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of this meeting. A sign-in sheet is on the table in the back of the room. Finally, I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. That's online. Are there any questions before we begin? Hearing none, we'll start with Agenda Item Number 1. St. Anthony's Band Club, Inc., 1040 Pine Street, Lot L-172. This is a variance request to build a two-story addition for storage space waiving requirements in the M District, lot size 12,479 plus or minus square feet.
Bob Barrowby, pro on engineering, representing the applicant. And as was just stated, there's an existing building on the property. It's on the corner of Pine and Valley Street, the northwestern corner. There's a retaining wall that runs along the eastern side of the property, pretty much from the beginning all the way down with an entrance in the middle to get to the parking lot, which is in the front of the building. What they're asking to do is to construct a two-story addition attached to that building. The approximate size will be 10 feet by 35 feet. That area, the retaining wall that runs right along the property line is what they intend to use as the foundation for the addition. The first floor will be underneath, and then above that, the second floor will match up with the building elevation of the floor where they have all their activities. We're asking to waive the sideline setbacks. The back setback is 16 feet now for the existing building. The proposed addition will be about 17 from that, so we're pretty much not getting any closer to the rear of the property, but we're pushing it to the limit on the sideline.
Right, to the sideline, zero.
Correct. And there's an existing wall which is elevated.
Is that retaining wall going to be used other than the foundation? Is that going to be part of the?
It's going to be part of the foundation, and then they will build up from that. The retaining wall is elevated above the elevation of the sidewalk, as it is now, so if you walk down the hill, down Valley towards Pine, the foundation wall, the retaining wall is actually built up.
It's already there, it's a couple of feet high.
Yeah, and they're using that, because you can see that based on the site, they use that area because it's boxed in for storage now. So that's why they'd like to enclose it, so that they can keep their equipment and whatever they store out there inside the building rather than leave it outside.
Are they storing it? Will it be connected to the building?
Correct, yes.
Will it be able to get entrance into the storage unit from inside the building?
From the building, yeah, from the inside.
Do you know the height?
Oh, I don't have...
You say height is what's there?
Yeah, it's going to match the floor elevations.
Won't be any higher than what's there.
No, it'll actually be lower, from what they were telling me. It'll be lower than the peak of the building that's there now, so we're not asking for any increase in total height of the building.
And 10 by 35 is sufficient dimensions for you to do it?
Yes. Yeah, that's what they think they need for each floor.
Members of the Board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Motion to be made.
Well, I want to ask, I want to ask...
Okay, sorry.
Let me ask the Director of Planning if he has any input onto this particular project.
If you were to consider granting approval, I think you should condition it as storage only, so it doesn't affect the parking, because it sounds like they're going to, you know, not big enough for stairwell, so it sounds like you're going to have... The downstairs is going to be an entrance from the downstairs for storage, and the upstairs to match the floor plate would be an entrance in there.
Yeah.
So I would, so it doesn't affect parking for additional use. I would think that you would need to be specific on that this is for storage only, and then, and I'm not really recommending site plan review. It's all paved, there's no drainage gain or anything that we can gain from it. From the standpoint, it's not very, it's all paved, and it's a small, extremely small addition compared to the size of the building.
Okay, so let's, Director of Planning?
I don't disagree with Mr. Roth, it's just that I don't know about the monitoring of whether or not they storage or they put something else in there. I don't, do we want to get involved in that bill? I mean, it's just a small...
It's your motion. That's what the Director of Planning said, if you want to make a motion.
No disrespect, but I'm just going to make a motion to allow the addition to be built. I think that that's what they're going to use it for, but rather than put a stipulation just as the storage, I don't think we're going to go out and monitor it. Quite honestly, that's just my feeling.
Okay.
But I do understand what Mr. Roth says in terms of parking. But parking's not really a problem there right now, right guys?
No, no, it's not.
Because they had none before, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right in front of the building.
Right.
But now you've got it. Because before, that was right on the, right on the...
Right.
It's a band club, so we have a lot of instruments and stuff, so that's where it is.
Let's destroy the instruments.
And sometimes the kids want to rehearsal, so while the band is rehearsing, the teachers will take the student and go in the other room.
See, that's what I'm trying to do. That's basically... I know what they do. I used to be a member there years and years ago, so, but that's my motion.
So that's Greg's motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay, so unanimous vote. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 2. The Salvation Army, care of Peter Salino Esquire, 429 Winter Street, Lot M-2568. Variance request to build, variance request to build an addition and a deck with ramp, waiving area and setback requirements in R4 District, Lot Size 12,197.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For purposes of the record, Attorney Peter Salino, I'm an attorney with law offices at 550 Locust Street here in Fall River. This is my client's variance petition relating to 429 Winter Street in Fall River. The property is an existing structure, existing dwelling at 429 Winter Street. The Salvation Army is the owner. They are creating a small proposed addition of about 490 square feet. That addition results in a further nonconformity, in the sense that while they're holding the northerly sideline of the building, they are not in conformance with the 10-foot sideline setback. So the building is currently 6.6 feet from the sideline. The requirement is 10 feet in an R4 District. And as a consequence, the addition holds that same width of 6.6, which is a deficiency under the zoning bylaw. So the first variance we're requesting is a side setback, so that we can maintain that 6.6.
3.4...
I'm not great at math, but yes, 3.4.
Well, if we're going to grant it, let's be clear on what the variances you need.
Okay. So the first variance that I'm requesting, Mr. Chairman, is a 3.4-foot sideline waiver on the northerly boundary of the structure. And the second is that the proposed addition will increase the lot coverage requirement to 34 percent, and the only allow, or the allowable coverage is 30 percent. So I'm looking for a waiver or a variance for 4 percent on lot coverage.
What's it being used for now, Attorney Salino?
It's currently, I have members of the Salvation Army here. If you'd like to speak, show them. Just introduce yourself for the record.
Sure, I am Major Sean Bellinger of the Salvation Army. I'm a corps officer, and it is a teen parent program for five women, five teenage girls and their children.
They live there?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. What's the addition going to be for?
It's going to be a kitchen for the program.
Is it the building that they were going to rehab? They're rehabbing this building?
It's currently, yeah, there are dumpsters outside. It's next to Tom McGuire's house, more or less.
That's what all the trucks were there for, now working on the...
That's correct.
That is correct.
Not anything to do with this.
Under renovation, that's right. The program has a temporary location at St. Anthony's.
Andy Kepner, is that what you're saying? And Collins Construction's the contractor. Becca Collins is here in the audience as well, on behalf of Collins.
The ramp is going, is it handicap ramp that's going in the proposed new ramp?
That's an existing ramp, I'm sorry, or Becca Collins with Collins Construction. That's an existing ramp that's there in place.
But it says proposed deck and ramp is what's being put, yes, ma'am?
Jane Gleason from Civitex, The Architects. There is an existing ramp that is on the lower part of the page.
Yes.
And then at the upper part, we've grabbed, we've extended from the existing landing, extended with a new ramp up to another landing and a deck that comes directly out from the kitchen and dining room.
Okay, that's fine.
And it's a handicap, it's a handicap purpose?
Correct, yes.
So 43, yeah, 48, Section 3, Paragraph 8, handicap ramp, so we're good with that. Okay.
So as a consequence, in closing, those are the two variants that we're asking. I think the hardship is that the structure's already there. We're trying to expand upon the structure for a good purpose. The lot doesn't lend itself to that extension to be built anywhere else because of plumbing, et cetera. So I don't think this derogates from the intent of the bylaw or deviates from the neighborhood. I don't think it's any more harmful to the neighborhood, and I submit to you that I think it's ripe for the grant of a variance as requested.
Thank you, Attorney Salino. Any other questions on the Board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here? Yes, sir.
I live on the other side. I'm the closest neighbor. They're very good, they're very good neighbors.
So you're in favor of this petition? Can I have your name and address, please?
I live at 411 Winter Street.
Your name, please.
Kyo William.
Thank you, William. Anyone else in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed to this petition? Can I get a motion to grant, motion to deny?
Motion to grant.
Motion to grant. Bill, anything we need to know about?
No, I was just going to comment, it's currently an existing, nonconforming setback. They're currently actually in for site plan review, and that's how we actually discovered it, when they had submitted for site plan review, that they needed a variance for this. I'm not opposed to it, it's been a pretty good application.
Greg said yes, Jim Corkin's seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So that's a unanimous vote. All five, great to, thank you.
Thank you, Members of the Board.
Agenda Item Number 3. Highland Farms Development, I'm assuming is Development LLC, care of Roger Poisson, 297 Driftwood Street, Lot U-165. A variance request to construct a 24 by 24 detached garage with driveway exceeding lot coverage requirements in the S District, Lot Size 12,237.4 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. For the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Roger Poisson, who is here. He is the purchaser of this newly constructed home on Driftwood Street. I think you're all familiar with the Highland Farms subdivision that Bristol Pacific has been constructing up north of St. Vincent's. So Mr. Poisson had entered into a purchase and sales agreement with the developer to purchase this single-family home, and when he got halfway through it, realized in their restrictive covenants that he cannot keep a camper in open space, that it needs to be a garage space. So then he first came to me and said, you know, can we put together or modify the site plan review plan that we had originally done for the single-family home? Not a problem, we made those changes. And then as I was going through it, I caught that it would exceed the allowable 25 percent lot coverage for an S District. So that brings us to you, requesting a waiver, variance, to allow the lot coverage to be increased to 39 percent, and that would include the proposed garage of 576 square feet and the concrete apron in front of it. This entire development already, all impervious roof surfaces are infiltrated into the ground, and the revised site plan that we had prepared for this garage would also do the same thing. So although we're exceeding the required lot coverage for the district, we are taking all of those impervious areas and recharging them into the ground. The building itself, the proposed garage meets, actually exceeds the required setbacks of only four feet on the side and rear, so we're at five for each of those. So it would strictly be a lot coverage issue.
For this Board, it would only be a lot coverage issue. Do you know, lead, if this is granted, City Council approval for the second driveway?
That's correct, and I have discussed that.
I just wanted to make sure, I did it for the record, tell it to you and whoever's sitting out there.
I have, I have explained that, and the worst-case scenario is, we could wrap it around the house and go to the existing driveway. What happens is, topographically, this lot is a walkout basement at where our concrete apron is shown, so you could walk out of that basement and straight into the garage. If we were to build up on the easterly corner, that would be higher, although that would make the driveway situation easier, but the applicant does know that he would need to go and get the additional curb cut.
And just, I don't remember the covenants, but is there any permission needed from the developer to?
They've signed the application, and no, they're 100% on board. You see the application is signed by the owner.
I'm just trying to cover the bases. We're the Zoning Board of Appeals, but if we have these other items, let's bring it to everyone's attention, so they don't come back and...
That's correct.
Okay.
So solely to house a camper, otherwise?
I don't want to limit...
No, I understand, but that's why we're here.
I got it. Members of the Board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Mr. Director of Planning, do you have anything that we should think about?
No, the only thing, if you should grant it, I want you to just explicitly require site plan review. Dan already knows that it needs, you know, that site plan review's already been approved, so he had to submit a new one. And have the infiltrators been put in? Because that's right in...
Well, I just submitted the ASBIL yesterday, and they already put in the two additional for the garage.
Are those going to be removed?
No, no, no. They put...
Oh, they did?
If you see, there's an extra pair on the ASBIL, that's for the garage to tie into.
Oh, okay.
Because they had to get it finished.
I would just request that you just make it explicit, the site plan review is required.
And the variance on the 25 percent, what did you say, 34?
39.
39 percent.
Yeah, it's on the plan, so you're in the center. If you look under the lot area, it'll say 39 percent lot coverage.
39 percent lot coverage, go ahead. So the variance by 14 percent. Okay. All right, so that's what's before us, we have a motion to grant with those conditions that have been proposed by the Director of Planning. Motion to deny, just a straight grant.
Motion to grant with the, 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 with And then, as well, Lot number 47, which is an 11,000 square foot lot. Two separately assessed parcels, and it's been that way since 2015 and prior. I know at least since this owner has owned it. So that vacant parcel that we're looking at, being 48, the city's assessing it at $79,600. And if you look at the single-family home lot 47, they assess that lot value at $87,000, mostly because it's much larger than, than 48. Now, I do not disagree that these lots have merged. However, the City of Fall River has not merged them for tax purposes, and they've continuously taxed them as individual lots. That's why we're here this evening, seeking a variance to re-subdivide them, making the smaller lot larger than 8,000 square feet, bringing it to 8,010 square feet with 60 feet of frontage. Again, this is an S District that requires 12,000 square feet with 100 feet of frontage. But we are in a neighborhood where the lots range anywhere from 3,800 square feet with 31 feet of frontage for a single-family home, up to 8,850, all with less than the required frontage. I think the only conforming lot, lot-wise, is the lot to the north. However, that, there are two homes sitting on that lot, as well as a garage structure in between. So other than that, this neighborhood is on actually smaller parcels, single-family homes, than, than the two being proposed. Additionally, when you look at the parcel as a whole being merged, you'll see that the existing dwelling of number 123 is to the far south of the property. It has its own driveway, its own garage, and then we have this additional 70 feet of open space, again, which has always been taxed as a separate parcel. So utilizing that land, it's really cut off from the existing lot of 123 that has its own backyard, has a garage, and then there's this additional land to the north that has just sat undeveloped. So when we combine the two parcels of land, as the chairman stated, we're, we're well above 17,000 square feet. So I would think that proposing the construction of a single-family home in this building envelope, showing two off-street parking spaces, and most importantly, meeting the building setbacks for that S District, would warrant the granting of a variance. If you have any questions regarding the proposal, or how we've come to this petition, I'd be glad to answer them.
Members of the board, any questions?
No, Mr. Sid. What, the history of this, and I talked to you about this.
Yeah.
In 2000, 2015-
Similar proposal was brought, was denied.
And, but in 2016-
Sixteen.
What did they do? Did they subdivide L-1646 from that bigger lot now?
Yes.
Correct.
That was all one at one time?
That's correct. Well, they were all in, in separate parcels and separate descriptions. However, the city felt that they were merged. So initially, we came in with the three parcels, 46, 47, and 48, and reconfiguring them to get three. That was denied. We then came back in and just cut out L-1646 as it existed. That's why the lot number is still successive.
Each, L-1646, L-1647, both had existing dwellings. They couldn't have been merged if you had the developed lots. And the city's position was they had all merged. So in 16, we said, L-1646 has a pre-existing lot that had a house on it, that should exist by itself. L-16, 47, and 48 had merged together as one lot. So all we did in sixteen-
A house and a garage.
A house and a garage for L-1647 and 48. 2015, they tried doing one, two, three lots. That was denied. So what you've got before you now is part of the 15 one is splitting the parcel, this, what's left into two lots, parcel one and parcel two. It's a, the lot as it exists right now, looks like it's a conforming lot. You've got the 100-foot of frontage, you've got the existing single-family dwelling, even though you don't meet the front setback requirement, the front yard setback requirements. But square footage-wise, you have the square footage, you have the frontage. So what you're taking is a conforming lot and creating two subsized lots with less frontage than, than required. The argument that I hear Mr. Aguirre making is because of the topography of this particular lot. You've got parcel two, which is kind of separate from parcel one. There is, I believe, a retaining wall in the front, and it really is separated from that vacant lot to the north, parcel two. The other issue that I don't think was ever corrected when this was before the board was, I believe, there is an existing encroachment at L-1649.
That's correct. It's shown on the plan.
Yeah, it's shown on the plan, but I don't think that ever, it's still shown, it's still there.
Never been resolved.
The property on the west side of Blaine Street is in the G District. The variance of the zoning line is right down the middle of Blaine Street. On the east side, it's in the S District. Again, older neighborhoods, well-developed, old plotting was for that 45-foot frontage. But the question is, we, here we are, 2019, we have an S District that the, the planning board has dictated or determined to be an S District. You have a conforming lot, do you want to make two non-conforming lots and add another house in there? So that's what's before the board. There's also, I haven't asked who's in favor, who's opposed to it, but we'll get there. There is some letter of opposition.
The only two lots that would conform to the S on our L-1649, L-16-
Fifty, and L-1618 possibly behind it.
Yes, you're correct. Well, 49 does not, because it's got multiple dwellings on it, but-
But, no, no, but the lot size itself-
Size meets it, but there are two buildings on it, you're right there.
Correct.
But you are correct, L-1618 does conform.
When this came across in 15, the encroachment wasn't-
That was an issue too.
Yeah, no, it was brought up.
It's still there, that's why I asked, is it still there?
Well, we don't control that property, and this, and this landowner hasn't wanted to make an issue out of it.
I thought this came before, as I told you, since 2016, I thought this was, could be more-
No, I thought it was why 15 issue-
Right, it has come before you twice.
It's been the two years.
And actually, I, I think, was it 16? It might have actually been a special permit. It might have been on the 423.
I think I asked Patty to get me-
I'm not sure.
Variance. 2015 was a variance.
That's what I denied.
2016. 2016 was a special permit.
Okay.
To, to separate the two lots-
Because of the two homes, yeah.
Under our ordinance, and that's why that got granted. Any?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Anything on this side? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Yes, ma'am, you identify yourself with the record, please.
My name is Cynthia Dines, and I reside at 189 Lemuel Street.
You sent us a letter?
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you're here in person, so we'll listen to you.
And I actually, in listening to Mr. Aguirre, I have to just revamp some of my numbers on, out of my statement, because I did misread this plan with the ultimate end result of the frontage that would be on both lots, so.
Can, do you have, can you see the plan? Have you seen the plan?
I do have a copy of the plan here, yes.
Okay, so please.
Okay.
Do you want me to read you? You're here in person. I can either read your letter, or you can tell us-
I can read it. My name is Cynthia Dines, and I reside at 189 Lemuel Street. I'm here tonight to voice my concerns regarding the variance being requested for 123 Blaine Street. The petitioner states that the size of the two lots together is in excess of what is needed for a buildable lot. But this excess that he refers to only amounts to an additional 35 feet of frontage and roughly about 5,000 square feet, a third of the amount required to construct a buildable lot. The proposed subdivision of the lots would leave one lot with, and I amend, 75-foot of frontage, and a second lot with only, and I amend, 60 feet of frontage, which is less than half of the current frontage requirement. The petitioner mentions in his appeal that this request is similar in nature to surrounding lots. While this may be true of the southern end, it definitely is not the case with the northern end of Blaine Street. I have resided in the neighborhood since December of 2016. One of the reasons I chose this neighborhood was due to the rural feel and green space. The lots on the northern end of the street range in size from eight to well over 16,000 square feet. These six lots, about a third of the street that I am referring to, are the only ones left. The rest of the street is overdeveloped and overcrowded. This is further illustrated in photos 10 through 15, which I have provided. Most egregious are photos 12, 13, and 14, which lead me to my next concern, which is parking, as is evidenced by photos 6, 7, 8, and 9. Photo 6 is a view of the corner of Blaine and Locust with a very large truck parked way too close to the corner. As is also evidenced by photo 7, when entering Blaine Street from Locust, there is only enough room for one car to proceed down the street at a time. Photos 1 through 5 are of my property and vehicles in relation to the property at 123 Blaine Street. In photo 1, according to the plan submitted, the grassy area where, across the street, would be roughly where there would be a double-wide curb cut for parking. Photo 4 shows the existing driveway for 123 Blaine Street and the rear quarter of one of my parked vehicles. Due to the existing granite walls, which actually are, have been damaged by their vehicles trying to get in and out of there, it requires vehicles to exit straight out into the street before being able to change, to turn the vehicle. It is a great neighborhood. People always walking their dogs, kids riding their bikes, which brings me to my final point. Sidewalks or the lack thereof, which is illustrated in photo 16. There are only six properties on the entire street that have sidewalks, and not even continuous at that. This forces families to walk in the street, which is already congested. For these reasons, I feel that this appeal should be denied. I feel that the neighborhood needs to be protected and maintained in its current state. Two-thirds of the street is already overdeveloped. When I look at some of these houses, I wonder how, if ever needed, the fire department would be able to even access these properties. The petitioner has already received one variance to allow him to sell one of the two existing houses on said property. And based on public, public record of purchase and sale of said property, I do not feel hardship is really an issue at this point in time. And I just want to reiterate that while the total lot size for his two properties, you know, are in, in excess of what is needed for a buildable lot, the very next lot next door to him is, you know, right up there in that ballpark of 16,766, I believe that that's what I can see on this plan, square footage. So that's why I feel that, you know, and I, I should say that, you know, my vehicles, that neighbor in that other lot have sustained damage to our cars and our houses from the comings and goings at 123 Blaine Street.
Mr. Dines, you're, you're directly across the street of this property, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else opposed to this petition? Any questions of the board?
Can I respond to a couple of them?
Yes, before, if you want to listen to what the respondent-
Yeah, I just want to respond to some of her comments first. Working backwards in her letter, we were not granted a variance, as we've already discussed. We were granted a special permit, which, as you all know, has a lesser requirement for, for proving a hardship.
I think you just explained that, that it was done as, under the ordinance that allows two buildings, that the lots really didn't merge, but go ahead.
She is correct that that front retaining wall and the elevation difference does create a problem for vehicles exiting the existing driveway at 123. That, this petition would actually resolve that issue, and that retaining wall could be removed. This home at 123 has been there since 1925, probably the, the first house on the street. So to say that all of the traffic accidents and everything else is originating from 123, I think is a difficult statement to make. With regards to sidewalks, that's not a zoning board issue, it's a city issue, and if the people on the street would like a sidewalk constructed, they can easily call the DPW. There are streets being rehabbed all over the city with streetscapes and getting sidewalks, and they should probably call the DPW to see if they can get some sidewalks installed in that location. She then states again regarding Lot 49, that the lot is 16,000 square feet. However, it does contain two existing single-family homes, and if we split that lot up with one single-family home on each, which will probably happen at, at some point, by special permit, of course, if they've both been built prior to 53, but I think 145 is relatively new, the one closest to us, both of those lots would be about 8,000 square feet. So the overall density of single-family home to land area on that lot is identical to what we're proposing on our lot. If you look at the next lot up, Lot 50, that's a three-family home in a single-family district. So there, the entire neighborhood has, probably 90% of the parcels have some form of nonconformity. So to hold this one landowner to the requirements of the S single-family district is definitely detrimental to him. And we just has this open piece of land that if you drive by, yeah, it looks fairly blighted, because it's, it's on the other side of the garage. It's not going to get taken care of. They live behind 123, so it's kind of like a piece of land that's, that's in limbo. This would allow for that parcel to be cleaned up, off-street parking provided, and the existing driveway and retaining wall situation could be resolved. That's all.
And the, the, for the two parking spaces that are being proposed to parcel two, is the loss of one parking space on the curb cut?
Yeah, what happens is the city only allows a 16-foot curb cut at the curb. Once you get past the property line, then you can open up and get wider. But right now, the 16-foot curb opening that we're allowed to remove, parking space is normally 18 to 20, so just under what it would be for parking space on the street.
So you're picking up two spaces and losing one.
Right, but in, in all defense, we're adding the two vehicles with the construction of the new home, right. But we would also be making parcel 47, we would also be improving the ability for multiple vehicles to park in that driveway and garage. Whereas now, it is difficult because of the retaining wall.
Okay. Anything else? Greg, you got something?
No, Bill.
On your, on your, oh, on-
Yes.
The retaining wall that's being removed, is this-
That's correct, yeah.
No, goes that whole length of the property, yeah? Okay. Yes, please?
So if the retaining wall is going to be removed, what's going to be done to sustain that elevation? Because we're talking about a two and a half to three foot, you know, the-
Yeah, it's retaining two or three feet, because from the wall going up that goes up-
Right, but I mean, if that wall's not there, that's spilling out.
So let's let Mr. Aguirre address that question for you.
With the construction activity that will take place on parcel two, and again, this would need to go through site plan review, of course, we would be able to regrade that entire area, and it may call for retaining walls further into the site. But at the street line itself, we would be able to take those retaining walls out and probably move them into the site around the house. Because of the topography on this site, it may even lend itself to a garage under on, on parcel two. But once we get to the site plan review process, that, that's what we'll probably look into.
Yes?
And as far as Lot 49, I believe that's the right one I'm referring to.
The one of, the north of it?
Yes.
The lodge, the one with the two dwellings on it, two single-family-
That is always been a, a bone of contention, where, I mean, I see on the plan only one house listed. And that other abode is a trailer. And ever since I moved into the neighborhood, I, I questioned, you know, the legality of that. I mean, it, it, it's like a park model trailer, and actually, when I purchased my property, they were in the middle of rehabbing it, like they literally vinyl sided this thing. And, you know, I don't think that being, you know, listed on this plan. So, I mean, you know, I didn't want to, you know, cause up a big problem for my neighbors, but, you know, that, I was kind of taken aback by that.
Okay.
To see something-
I mean, it is listed on the plan accurately, as the assessor office has it listed as two separate structures on that, on that property.
It exists, maybe a pre-existing-
Right. I, I don't know how it got there, but it's there.
It's a trailer.
Understood. Okay. Director of Planning, is there anything we should know of? What are your concerns, if any, about number fours?
I think everyone's expressed that, if, I'm just going to say, if you were to approve it, require a site plan review and the two parking spaces. One of the issues, and I'm kind of conflicted, I don't know how we can deal with it, but I think a discussion is that encroachment. I mean, they're, they're going to be resurveying this. They could survey and bring that line down, but they would obviously have to get agreement with Lot 49 to, you know, come six inches off.
Agreement with 49, I mean, 49's the one who's encroaching, not the one on-
Right. It, it's, it's actually like a bump-out step portion of the structure, and it's actually, I think, I believe it's concrete. I mean, it's been, we surveyed it back in 15, but from what I recall, it's something that could be removed. The owner has just never approached that a butter, that a butter had never come to, to any of the meetings to resolve that issue. But I'm, I'm sure it would get worked out at some point in time, but I, I believe it's only a concrete stoop, not part of the structure itself.
My only thing is, if it did get resolved, and they resolved to do a survey and, and come around it six inches-
We lose frontage.
You would, well, no, you could just-
No, you just do a bump-out, yeah.
You'd do a bump-out around the thing, and people do that, you see that all the time. That would, that would affect the side yard setback in the future.
That's correct, absolutely. And so what, and what would end up happening is, because of the variance that was granted, and we have a specific area that we're being granted for, if that were to ever take place, we would need to come back before this board, and we would probably do a land swap, so that if we gave them six inches, we would have to bump out the real line just to make the areas be equal, so that we're not in, in negligence to the, to the variance petition that's before you.
Do you know how much of an encroachment that is?
I believe it's less than half a foot.
So, I'm just thinking, I don't want you coming back for that singular issue on the golden objects, if you had 14 feet.
From what my understanding is, again, the current owner has never wanted to address it. I do believe that the Brown Court Development will address that prior to construction.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, you had your hand up one more time.
Okay, if you refer, if you look at photo one of the package that I have-
Yes.
It clearly shows that encroachment. It is a mudroom, and I can't speak to what changes were made to that structure jutting off the side of the house. But that door that's there, you can see, well, you can't see the steps because of those logs, but the steps that go up to it are very old. So what my assumption of this matter is, that maybe at one time, the door section might have been there, but anything to this side of it might have been a slight addition on their part when they, you know, they vinyl'd and did whatever. But that was all done before I moved in. And then off the back of that structure, I believe there's another door, because I know the people that lived there, and the gentleman that resides there with the woman who owns the house, I mean, was most recently doing some work with the vinyl along the bottom of the structure. So, you know, and she, I've spoken with them at length, and they have had conversations with the property owner-
Oh, that's fine.
That weren't favorable.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, members of the board, what do you want to do? Motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to deny. I think we're setting this up to be a future issue of the encroachment and having everybody do the law again.
John Frank, okay. Motion to deny. Motion, John Frank, second. Carol Marsette. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
No.
No? Fordham, okay. So, the vote is four to one to deny.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming out. Agenda item number five, Brian A. Texera, 327 Chicago Street, Lot E179. Variance request to subdivide existing parcel, leaving an existing two-family dwelling on Lot 1, 8,960 plus or minus square feet, while constructing a new single-family dwelling on Lot 2, 9,640 plus or minus square feet, waiving requirements in the R8 District, lot size 18,600.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of Sitec Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Brian Texera, who is here this evening as well, taking some time out of some of his service to come see what the Zoning Board of Appeals is all about. And as the chairman stated, this is with regards to property at 327 Chicago Street, on the south side of Chicago Street. Before we get into the actual petition and what our proposal is, you'll see in, in the form that we've submitted, Mr. Texera purchases property just most recently in February of, of 2019, came to my office looking to subdivide this parcel into three parcels, leaving the middle structure on one parcel, parcel on either side. And his mindset behind that was, if you look at the City of Fall River Patriot Properties, they have this parcel listed as BL, which zoning requirements are 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet. And I put the copy of the, in the actual petition, you'll see the assessor's card, and this happens often. And again, we know to look for it, and that's the first thing we look at, and we look at the actual zoning map. However, when the property was sold and when Mr. Texera purchased it, he thought he was buying a property that was zoned BL, that only required 5,000 square feet. Do you have it there, Mr. Chairman?
I do, I was looking at the date to make sure my signature wasn't on it.
Well, I, I can't say that, I don't know if it was presented to him legally as being a BL, or if anyone informed him. But when I told him that it was actually zoned in, in R8, it was a bit of a shocker. He had purchased his property as a method to, to make some money, have somewhere to live, and be in a very nice area of the city. So, with that being said, we then sharpened our pencil, and I explained to him that, well, you know, the next step would be we can petition the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have more than enough area. We have 18,600 square feet of area, so we don't need an area variance. What happens, though, is, and this actually is to our benefit in seeking relief, is that the uniqueness and the location of this existing structure sits in the middle of this. And if you look at my plan, you're going to, you'll see a set of dashed lines on either side of the existing dwelling. Those are actually the original parcel lines. So this was three at one time, and maybe it was zoned BL at some time, I don't know. I'm not sure when it changed to R8, but the, the records didn't get updated. So what we were able to do is, because this house sits in the middle, I explained to him, I said, well, it may look a little odd, but we're going to have to get both parcels above the 8,000 square feet. Where there was an existing garage that you see in the southeast corner of the property- Where there was an existing garage that you see in the southeast corner of the property, and an existing driveway already on the west side of the property, we went out, we did the survey. Originally, Mr. Texera had thought he would want to be on the west side, where you see labeled parcel one with that existing driveway. The problem that we came into was, the lot line that we would be creating between the existing two-family and what our new lot line would be, because we would have to be at least fifty feet wide, was less than two feet. That's why you see that dashed line. So if we had gone up with a fifty-foot wide lot on that side, we would have been right up against that existing structure. So when we moved to the other side, you can see that that gives us much more room in width to give an allowable side yard setback of five feet, which there's a sidewalk there for the existing two-family. We can provide a ten-foot side yard between the line that we're creating, and then the remaining outside property boundary setbacks meet the requirements of the district, actually exceed it for the front yard, but that's so that we have room to meet some parking spaces.
So what setback requirements are you requesting? I mean, what setback?
So, regarding the new construction, the only setback requirement that we are asking for a waiver is from fifteen-foot side to ten. And that's to the property line that Mr. Texera will still remain owning the two-family. So it's, we didn't put the ten on the side where there was an or butter to have concern, where he's creating his own issue of having only a ten-foot setback and not a five. With regards to the existing two-family, it would be the side yard of five that you see, and a rear yard of ten, if you would call that the rear yard or a side, or whether the fifty-foot after the L was actually technically considered the rear. Off-street parking would be provided for both structures, to the extent required by the bylaw, two spaces for each.
Waiver of front yard in the existing two-family, or is it pre-existing? Is twenty feet front yard?
The existing two-family is going to be left with ninety, where we only need eighty.
Front yard setback.
Oh, the front yard setback? No, that's as-is, so whatever is existing. We're not changing the front yard setback.
All right, so I think that's less than twenty, so you need a variance for that?
Well, it's an existing structure, and we're not moving that line, so I don't think one is needed.
Well, except you've got an existing two-family nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming in this district.
Just to make sure that you're covered up, you're probably right, Dan, it already exists, but.
You mean the actual use being two-family, you think it needs additional relief?
I'm just saying, the issues with the existing two-family dwelling on this lot, it's not just a two-single families, so.
You're correct.
I'm looking at all the waivers that probably, that probably, listening to Greg, should be granted to make sure this parcel one, if it's granted, has all the waivers needed, so we're not seeing you again because someone says, ah, you've got this.
Correct.
So, because if it was, if the lot continued undeveloped, other than that two-family, then you'd have the pre-existing nonconforming argument. Now that you're creating parcel number two, maybe Greg is right that you need to get.
They should listen.
Keep it clean for, it may not, because it is existing structure, Dan, so you're probably right.
I'm sure what happened, well, when this was BL, that use would have been allowed.
Allowed, exactly.
And what we.
Well, we are in R eight in two thousand and nineteen.
Absolutely. Right. I'm just trying to get some history of how the two got there. Yeah.
And you might be right, Dan, I was just trying to be overly cautious.
Overly cautious is, is always good.
So parcel one, then, you're looking for a rear setback from twenty to ten?
Correct.
Side.
Side from fifteen to five.
Fifteen to five.
And potentially throw in there that would, to clean it up, maybe a.
The frontage.
The front, the front setback.
The front setback.
And so then parcel two, the only waiver you're seeking is the side?
And frontage.
And frontage.
Yeah. The one side from fifteen to ten, the other.
Frontage from eighty or sixty.
Will be sixty, sixty instead of eighty, so a twenty-foot reduction of frontage. But it also, it's ninety-six hundred square feet, which is sixteen hundred square feet larger.
Yes.
Is that existing garage gonna stay, or is that gonna be raised?
Brian, what do you think?
Oh, no, sir.
No, he'll be taking it down. That's official. He'll be taking it down.
That's affirmative, the existing garage is going, correct?
That would throw you over lot coverage, right?
With what? With the?
Existing garage. You didn't.
If you left the garage?
Did you run the counts on that?
I didn't, but we've got a thirty-two by thirty-four, don't ask me to do the math in my head again. I think I did check it, though, because I know lot coverage has been an issue. I don't have my phone. Does anybody have a calculator?
No, he's proposing to raise it.
He's getting it raised.
No, but if you want to check the lot, the house size and the driveway size, to make sure that we're under the twenty-five.
Oh, you should be.
I would think so, but.
I didn't know if keeping the garage and that threw you over, but it sounds like you want to remove it.
Well, I'm asking, because you're gonna have this new dwelling, do you want this existing garage, it's going, so that eliminates that issue.
Yeah, I mean, they would, they would have to reconstruct the driveway, and it could use some work.
Is there anything else, members of the board? I'll ask if anyone here is in favor of this petition, is there anyone here opposed to this petition? All right, so this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna start over here to my left, and we'll work our way across. So, see?
He can talk.
He can talk for you?
Yeah, he can.
Okay, will you identify yourself for the record, please?
My name is Eddie Feliciano, and I reside on three fifty-four Chicago Street, a single-family home.
Okay, so you are at a diagonal over.
At a diagonal.
Okay, go ahead, I got you.
My neighbor here is right directly in front of the property.
He's at three forty-four?
Three forty-four. And the next one is right in front of the property two.
Three twenty-two?
Yeah.
Okay. And how about the fourth one?
Fourth one is inside of that property.
Three sixty-five?
Three sixty-five.
Okay.
Couple of houses over from that side.
Couple of houses over, okay, so tell, tell us, tell us what you, tell us why you objected.
I object, because, I mean, the neighborhood is tight as it is. Again, we have a small street, if cars are parked side by side, on opposite sides, you could barely fit vehicle going through. We've been having a problem with speeding, all the construction going on in the street. It's a very family-friendly neighborhood. Our neighborhood right now is, I mean, the houses are close as it is, and to see another house getting built right in front of our house, and have it congested as it is, you know, it just takes away from our curb appeal and from the neighborhood. I like getting up and coming outside in front of my house, and I see that area, I took a picture of it, and it, and it's beautiful the way it is, is, is property. There's trees there, we got a nice breeze that come out of there. I mean, it looks clean. I think if they sit there and build something else there, as tight as we already are, I think in the long run, I think our property, property values could actually go down. I mean, this is the first time I've ever done anything like this, so.
No, you live in the neighborhood. It's good that you came out, it's good that you're telling us. What I want you to, what I, and I maybe should let Dan talk before I.
No, you got them all finished. Or if there's anybody else.
No, so one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention is, I understand, it's a two-family house that exists already.
Yes.
It's in a single-family neighborhood.
Yes.
But the lot size that they're proposing for the existing two-family has ten feet more frontage than what's required, and it has the right amount of square footage. So, that's that lot. The new lot has, it's missing twenty feet of frontage. If it had twenty foot more, eighty feet, they would have been able to do this as a matter of right. So they're looking for this board to say, waive the frontage of twenty feet, and they get a house lot that's eight thousand.
Ninety-six forty.
Nine thousand six hundred and forty square feet, which is sixteen hundred square feet more than what's required, except the frontage, instead of it being eighty feet, is only gonna be sixty feet. So that's something, so that's something for this board to consider. But when we talk about congestion, the lots, parcel one and parcel two, seem to be greater than the other lots in the neighborhood. So, I just wanted to make sure that you saw the dimensions and understood what they were.
No, and we did.
Okay.
I mean, you're right, some of the neighborhoods is.
I'm not saying yes or no, all I'm saying is, I want to make sure that you understood what.
No, we, we do understand.
Thank you. Sir, you spoke for everyone? You were, he was the spokesman for the podium. Sir, would you like to speak? Okay. You are the petitioner, right? You're in favor of this. You were on opposition right now. Sir, anything? No? Okay. There was a letter that we received from, let's see, how many neighbors? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten different neighbors, looks like lots of husband and wives signed, three twenty-two, three twenty-two. Did I, you sign the petition? Where did I see three twenty-two?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So three twenty-two, three seventy-two, three sixty-five, three fifty-four, three forty-four. So, they all signed this petition that was opposed to it, it's dated May fifth. Dear zoning board members, we are writing this letter due to a correspondence we received from you regarding a variance that is before you for your proposed one-family dwelling at three twenty-seven Chicago Street. Dan, did you see this?
No.
Did you see this letter? It is our understanding that the property is being divided into at least two, possibly three lots, so we know it's only two. We are opponent, we are opponents of this variance, because we believe that such permit granting that relate, that relate to the shape or topography of such land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures, should not be permitted to build such a dwelling. The neighborhood is made up of families who have raised their children and have lived here for a long time. They live here, they are not investors, they care about the neighborhood and watch out for each other. Suddenly, we have people coming into our neighborhood who want to be investors and not be part of the neighborhood. They have not lived here, are planning to stay here, to know what it's like on our street during snow removal and difficulties with parking. We don't need a congestion of more houses to worsen the situation. It is impossible, it is impossible how your board can approve another single-family dwelling in a property that has limited space to build a one-family dwelling plus off-street parking. Additionally, you have a two-family house that will have no off-street parking. If this project goes through, the current residents will not be able to get out of their driveways with the congestion of cars on the street. The whole situation is taking away from everything we have done between Rodman Street and Carter Street, building a family neighborhood. Extremely concerning is that Mr. Texera has purchased his property for income purposes. He is not planning to live in the neighborhood and grow a family here like we did. He wants to fix up the two-family home, rent it out, make more money on the one-family dwelling that is before you, and leave probably to live in one of the surrounding towns. He is not concerned about the people that have lived here for twenty years or over. It is not right that people are given these variances and our concerns get overlooked. We are taxpayers that deserve to be heard, we care about our neighborhood, it is because of decisions that are made that it forces good people to put up a sales sign and leave Fall River. We should not be forced out because of poor conditions created by investors, therefore, we ask this board to not allow this variance to go through. We ask that this one-family dwelling not be allowed to be built in this neighborhood. These variances need to be stopped. You have to stop houses being built on top of houses, in this case, only for income purposes, not to live in their houses. They will make money and leave and not care of what consequences it causes to those who have called the neighborhood their home. Parking and people leaving their driveways is a big factor because of cars parked on the street. Additionally, the value of our homes will drop, people with good families do not want to live in congested areas. We ask that you not approve the variance, it will turn our neighborhood into another congested area with problems at the City of Fall River, and the neighbors will have to battle before you. We ask that you personally speak to the neighbors, especially those that are being directly affected by this, before you make a decision. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. We are opposed to the variance that is before you, signed by this group of people. So that was that letter of opposition, and I think it reflected everything that you said.
If I could respond?
You can, please.
It seems like the primary objective that this board would consider is with regards to vehicles exiting the driveway or traffic. There are two existing driveways there now. So I believe that the addition of potentially two, two additional vehicles servicing the single-family home, I cannot imagine that that would create such a horrendous traffic condition that it would be concerning to this neighborhood, other than just being an excuse for not wanting to allow this gentleman to, to build this home. I, I am not privy to the fact whether or not Mr. Texera plans on building here or not. I know he does, doesn't want to fix up the two-family, and yes, that is an income property, and that's why he purchased it. And getting, and getting back to, again, what, what his mindset was when he purchased it, not only did he think he had three lots buildable under the BL district, his deed actually references each one of them independently, and described independently. So, again, he went into this thinking, this is what I'm buying. And again, that's not necessarily for the board to take into consideration when, when we're looking to grant a variance. However, I think the proposal before you is probably one of the more reasonable petitions that I've come before.
Shape, topography, soil condition, hardship, I mean, I think that's what you need to address, and I think you've addressed the size of the lot, the hardship, but let's see what the director of planning has to say, if he has any conditions or things that the board should think of.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, Greg, do you have a second?
I was just, I was gonna ask you that, so the two driveways depicted on the plan are there?
Right, so the one that's to the west of the two-family?
If.
That's there, as it's, as it's shown, we will have to make an additional parking area around that lot in order to comply with, we need four off-street parking spaces. That curb cut's there.
So we can say.
On the opposite side, we would be extending that curb cut to sixteen, it's probably ten to twelve now. It's probably only one.
Before it was used for the garage, technically?
Exactly. Yeah.
That's why I thought there were two.
So they're gonna.
Yeah, so there are two curb cuts.
Though, I think they're gonna expand the, the minimum of two off-street parking.
The dashed is the old, correct?
Is the old, is the old, is the old property.
The dashed is existing.
Yes, underneath, yeah.
The dashed one is the existing.
And actually, if the board wanted to make a condition that the existing curb cut is not opened, we could put our cars in and stack them, two, one on top of each other, so that we weren't taking away any additional parking spaces on the street.
So four for the two-family and two for the single-family?
That's correct.
Using, using the existing curb cuts?
That's correct.
Using the, using the existing curb cuts.
We could make that work.
Taking anything away.
Yeah, we could make that work on the single-family.
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman?
Greg, but what were you gonna tell us?
Well, to address one comment that Dan just made regarding the potential proposed single-family using the existing curb cut, I don't believe that between the property line and that house is twenty-five feet, you can't double-stack two cars in twenty-five feet, you would extend into the right-of-way, so.
I don't know what you mean. Miss.
Well, I think it goes back to the statement, if you only, if you keep it valid.
We can keep this, and we can do this.
Oh, okay.
That's what I, that's what I understood, I mean, rather than to do this, rather than.
We've got fifteen feet in width on the side of that, that we could.
Keep it that, park the cars on the side.
I think everyone's talked about the different variances and that, I'm not gonna comment. Oh, I wasn't gonna comment on that. Typically, I've, like, if you look at approving it, I would, if you're inclined to approve it, I would recommend several conditions. For parcel two, require site plan review, require two parking spaces, and require, since the applicant said that, to specifically require the garage to be removed. The additional comment that's been made is, is that the existing curb cut couldn't be expanded. That's something that was just offered. For parcel number one, I would recommend requiring site plan review to provide for four off-street parking spaces, provide for landscape screening of the parking area towards lot E seventeen-seven, which is the parcel to the, to the west, because if you do a traditional parking lot that comes in, it would, most likely, they would come in and head in and park towards the three oh-nine. And in addition, require on parcel one.
Wait, how, how much of screening on the parking area? Not the whole length?
No, the park, just.
The length, the length of the paved surface.
The length of the parking area would be.
So whatever the parking area is, landscape screening?
Yes, whether, whether it be screening.
Would that be addressed, would that, would that type of screening be addressed at site plan review?
Yes, but I would just say, you should just say, provide screening of the parking.
Okay.
It'll be thirty-six to forty feet long, four spaces.
No, I just, I just, I want, listen, I don't want to overburden, if we grant, I want to know what we're doing, so we don't have any issues. Go ahead.
And then the other thing is, that the proposed, the potential four-lot parking lot needs to be installed, needs to be permitted installed prior to. um, lot needs to be installed, needs to be permitted installed prior to issuance of a building permit on parcel two. Because that's, some of the things I read here are a lot of the issues on parking.
Yep.
So, my crux is to require four off-street parking spaces for the two-family, to require it to be screened, and to require it to be installed prior to?
To the building permit for parcel two.
Building on parcel two.
And the raising of the garage has to be a condition?
That's on parcel two, that I've already mentioned.
No, I just wanna, uh, everything comes together on the two parcels if this is gonna be approved.
Yeah.
If it's gonna be denied, then it doesn't really matter.
So?
Okay. So, those are all your comments?
Those are me and my comments, if you were looking at, to try to address some of the concerns of the neighbors.
Very good. Okay. So, we've heard who's in favor, we've heard who's opposed, we've heard the comments from the director of planning, what somebody else has got the answer. Yes, sir?
Hi, uh, I mean, I won't make concern, it isn't only the park. Our concern is the neighbors, the, the, well, community, uh, we're one. It took a while for everybody to gather around together and treat each other as a family.
That was quite clear in this letter.
Yeah, you're right. So, now, him building a house directly, pretty much in front of my house, takes a complete overview of what we already have now. My house won't, when we come outside, it won't be the same.
If we grant the variance, you're absolutely correct. There will be a change in the neighborhood. There will be a new family living across the street from you.
Yes.
This particular project has a large piece of property. So, it's up to this board to decide whether or not we grant him permission to do it or whether we don't. If we do grant it, then I absolutely agree with you, the neighborhood will change and there'll be a new house over there.
Yeah, and I understand, I, I purchased this home because of the, the neighborhood alone. You know, if, if this was the case and the houses were gonna be congested in front of each other the way it's gonna be, I would've never purchased this home, I would've purchased it somewhere else. You know, we live in a, in a beautiful neighborhood in the Maplewood area.
Yes.
You know, we try to keep it where it is.
I know this. I understand what your concerns are, and that's why we have five members that have to make this decision, and that's why this petitioner has the right to come before the board to see whether or not the board will grant him permission, because he couldn't do it, cannot do it unless the board says?
Yes, sir.
Yes, he can do it. If we approve it, then you all have the right to appeal. If we deny it, he has the right to appeal. But the process is to, and it works, I'm glad you're out because you live in the neighborhood, and this board, even though I drove by and I looked at it, I wasn't there enough hours to say, this is how this neighborhood works. You need to be engaged, you need to be, come before the board and tell us. I don't know what the other five members are gonna do, I don't know what I'm gonna do yet, but it's things for us to think about. You have to understand, this is a unique piece of property, it has some issues concerning the shape and the existing, uh, building that's there. So, if, if, if we can make it, uh, a rational decision, you'll have a decision in about five to ten minutes.
No problem.
Thank you.
We're staying in our opinion, you know?
That's why you're here. Yes, sir?
Uh, I'd like to thank you guys for coming out. I know they talk about families and whatnot, and I did just move into the area. Um, this is mostly gonna be for myself moving forward. Um, I'd like to start my own family, I don't wanna do it in a two-family. I get what you guys are saying, it's nice to have that area and all that, but you gotta look at my view too, and I look across the street, you guys' houses are close to each other, so, to me, it's like, you know, I'm trying to get in that same level, where I can have a single-family house, where I can, you know, start a family, have children, I don't wanna do that in a two-family. All right, if I'm staying in a one-family, kind of monitor the two-family, take care of that investment whilst living in a single-family home, and just like you said, touch with the parking, you know, there will be two driveways and whatnot to accompany that.
So, in regards to the comments in the letter of objection, you do plan to live in one of those houses?
Yes, sir. I've received an offer for the fire department to work, I believe it's a year and a half probation, you have to live in the city forever. Uh, once I get off orders, I'm gonna start doing that, and I'm required to live in the city, so, it's kinda, I'm not trying to like sell or make money and, you know?
No, no.
Over the public area.
No, that, that's exactly where I'm going with it. Issue, it's nice of you, bless you, it's nice of you to address that, but I was going, bless you again. The, the issue for us, and, and again, people talk about, you're buying it, you're making money, the issues before this board are the shape of the lot, topography, if there's any topographical errors or issues that need to be addressed, soil conditions, if there's a financial hardship, not financial to you, to your pocketbook for the development of this property, or whether or not it, the way the structure is situated in the property, that that's a basis, that that's a hardship, that you're under utilizing the land, and those are the things for this board to consider, and if it derogates from the zoning ordinance or is detrimental to the neighborhood. So, that, that's what we have to consider. Whether you live there, we, we can't make that a condition. You live there, you gotta get the variance, but it's nice that you're explaining to the neighbors that you're, that's what your intention is. Does that answer that?
Okay. Carol, would you have anything to say?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, so, we've heard all the input, uh, do I have a motion to grant with conditions? Do I have a motion to deny? What do you want to?
I have a motion to grant it with the conditions that there are, uh, on, on a possible one, uh, keep the existing curb cut for cars with?
Screening.
The screening?
Landscape screening, site plan review?
Site plan review. What was the third one on that?
That it be installed prior to issuance of the building permit online.
And the second one, that there's two off-street parking spaces, keep the existing curb cut and remove the existing garage.
Pro, and remove the existing garage bef, again, before the building permit will be issued?
Fine, and if that's site plan review, so?
Site plan review. Okay. So, that's Greg's motion. Motion to grant with those conditions.
And I will put those other, um, waivers in, just to be sure, Dan, relative to the front yard?
And the use of the two-family.
And, and the use of the two-family, just to make sure that.
Okay. So, those, those waivers of the side yard for parcel number two, and the waiver on the side yard on parcel number one?
Rear yard on parcel number one, front yard on parcel number one, and the use?
Okay.
And the front.
And the frontage on parcel two.
The frontage, parcel two.
Correct.
Okay. So, that's Greg's motion. To end. Andrew, have a second.
I have a second.
Second, Carol Amara, second. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Greg, Carolyn, John Frank, Jim Clark, David Asa. So?
Thank you very much.
That petition is granted with those conditions.
Thank you.
Petition was granted with certain conditions, okay? That's what happened.
You have it, you're right.
You absolutely do, sir. But you have, okay, yes, you can, but you have to wait until I sign the decisions and they get, uh, filed in the board's office. That should be about fourteen days from now?
And if you wish to come to the planning department, we can give you the code section on what you need to do if you wish to appeal.
Thank you. Thank you, good luck to you, sir. Okay. Agenda item number six. Louis and, uh, Greta Cavallo, Albert Gomes, twenty-two seventy Highland Avenue, lot T nineteen eighty-one. A six-month extension request for variance originally granted with conditions on May seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, for construction of a single-family dwelling in an S district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Again, Dan Aguirre from Site Tech Engineering, um, here this evening on behalf of the new property owner, Albert Gomes, who is here as well. You may recall that this variance was granted a year ago tomorrow. Um, and this is for that lot that was on Highland Avenue, conforming lot that was very, very steep, and we actually got a front yard setback to be able to bring the house up front. So, variance decision was, um, recorded at the registry of deeds, we went through the site plan review process, then Mr. Cavallo decides he doesn't wanna build the house anymore, puts the, the lot for sale, Mr. Gomes buys it, comes to me, wants to put a new house on it, other than what was previously approved, a much smaller house. Um, and as we're going through that process, I alerted him to the fact that, hey, this, this relief is going to?
Expire.
Expire. Just the fact that we went through site plan review, although different than a building permit, I was not sure if that would be, uh, or constitute acting on the variance. So, I explained to him that the best thing to do while we're completing the new site plan review package is just to simply ask for the six-month extension, um, and come before the board pay the fee, write a letter, and come ask you to?
The house is small, the proposed house?
The house will be smaller, and, and it will be going through site plan review again. I think you can ask Mr. Gomes, how many, how many house designs have we been through? It's been a bone of contention, but, no, but I mean, super nice guy.
Six months enough?
That's all, that's all, that's all we have.
Yeah, that's all, that's all you can grant, but, Miss, we should be wrapping up with submitting a new site. He can pull a building permit using the old site plan review, we just wanted to do it correctly, and have a?
No, you're not gonna have it done. So, the six-month, six-month extension, but if not, is there nothing else we can do if you don't get?
Right. I, I explained to him, once we even get site plan review, even if you're not ready to build the home, if you stubbed out your sewer or your water, just do something on it, then you'd be okay. Which, for the last month, we were thinking, you know, do, do we do that? Do we stub out water and sewer?
No, you're starting before the board.
Rather than rush?
Thank you. Okay, so, members of the board, what do you want to do?
Motion to grant six-month extension.
Anyone here in favor? Anyone here opposed? Six-month extension, Greg second?
Second.
John Frank, okay. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's granted.
Thanks.
Uh, number seven, Angel Estrella Molina, one forty-seven John Street, I fifteen sixty-six. Six-month extension request for variance originally granted with conditions on May seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, for construction of a four-family dwelling in the A two district. I'm gonna ask the question whether or not I voted on this one or not, whether I recuse myself, because I'm doing some work for Mr. Molina right now, so I don't know whether that's, if I voted on this one, then I, I don't see any difference, but if I did, if I did, I'm abstaining again.
I wonder if the taxes are two thousand and four?
Yeah. About the stretch.
Two thousand and two?
You should have the, the cover letter from me, and I think you have the right variance with it.
Yes.
There was a previous, way back when in oh, oh-four, that, that created this lot, yeah.
Frank Hawkins, Morissette, Boone, and Dupree.
So, obviously, I didn't vote on it, so why don't the same group, uh, vote on that one, and I'm abstaining? That way it'll be consistent.
And this is a parcel, we, again, we've gone through site plan review.
Which in the villa?
No, you sent me my approval. I brought a copy, if you would like me to give it to you. Do you remember that one now?
No, I don't, they're all blending.
They keep you busy with the site.
What's held it up now? No, what's held it up, really?
What's held it up? Just, just fine, well, right now, we just got it within like two weeks ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah, no, it's very recent.
Motion to grant?
Yeah.
Is anybody here in favor? Anybody here opposed?
Motion to grant six-month extension.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay? Yep. I think Carolyn made it, Greg second.
No, Greg made it.
Greg, Greg.
John seconded it, and then he filed.
Oh, you were acting as chair, chair pressing, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Dan.
Got it? Okay. Uh, so, let's see. Agenda item number eight, legal notice deposit. Discussion of requiring your deposits to cover the cost of newspaper legal notices for public hearing applications. And that, I think, is gonna be discussed by the director of planning.
Yes, thank you. Um, I've been reaching out to the, uh, last night was the licensing department, uh, tonight is the zoning board of appeals, and then next week will be the, uh, planning board. What I would like to look at proposing to do is, uh, a significant portion of the budget, our budget is a, what would I consider as a direct reimbursable expense, it's not an application fee. Under Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, fifty-three G and a half, we can set up a deposit account and require for, uh, various things for deposits. What I am proposing to do when, uh, and it's done in other towns, and actually, my previous, uh, town, we did this for planning boards, special permits, variances, we collected a deposit for the legal ad, because these legal ads are going up, up and up, and, um, and so, what I would like to do is, uh, require a legal ad deposit that, um?
Deposit or fee?
A deposit.
They get it back?
Yes, they do. Well, what they get back is, what we do is, we put it in this special account, I've, I've talked with Ms. Sahadi, um, and we set up the account. Whenever an application comes in, um, let's say I'll just use the, this, all of these required public hearing notices, I will take the legal ad, let's say, we take a deposit of two hundred dollars, I have a legal ad for seven items, and if those seven items, I take the legal ad, I divide it by seven, and it's a hundred and fifty dollars an applicant, we will then pay the legal ad a hundred and fifty per applicant, and then refund the balance into, to each of the applicants. So, we're strictly taking a deposit for a direct reimbursable expense. Once that expense has been paid, then we are looking at, we would look at refunding, uh, whatever the balance is. There is a provision, and, that we could look at taking an administrative fee of like five percent if we wanted to.
And what do we do now with the application fee?
The application fee goes strictly to the general fund.
Question is the color of money. We pay the application fee, the, I guess, the department ends up paying the, the legal fees out of your?
Out of our budget.
Out of your budget while the, while the fee itself goes into the general fund. This sets up a separate one, so it ends up costing the applicant not only the fee, but in addition to public, it's correct.
But they get the deposit back?
They only get the, they only get the excess back of what's not used.
Under the law, who's required to publish the legal notice?
We are.
So, how is it that we can transfer the burden of that cost to the applicant?
Those are our current fees.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be better if it was just to raise the application fees?
But, I, I'll, I'll let him address that, but I think procedurally what happens is, the publication fees come out of his budget, out of the planning budget, while all the fees go into the general funds. While this one now separates a fund that publication doesn't come out of the operating budget for the planning department, sets up a separate operating fund for publication that's outside of the general fund.
And this is done in a lot of different communities.
But for the petitioner, it's costing them more money, it's costing them the application fee, and it's costing them a publication fee. But the question is, who holds on to the money? Does it just go into the general coffers, or does it become part of the, a separate[1619.12] separate fund?
This, what I'm proposing is not a fee. It is a deposit collected for a direct reimbursable expense. Once we pay that expense, any, anything that is remaining gets refunded back to the applicant.
Who controls that money? Who controls the checkbook?
The way it works is, it goes into the account. When the bill comes through, we would do a, the way it's done in other places is, like, take, for example, in Fairhaven, the planning board had the direct reimbursable. So whenever we refund it, it was a signature of the, of the planning board, so it would be the licensing authority.
So you issuing yourself, not the treasurer's office?
Well, if, the treasurer's office sets up the account, and it's kept separate and apart from the monies, and the monies in the special account may be extended by the authorization of the board.
I was thinking the mechanics of it. It's not, it's not you, Brittany, and Patty issuing the checks. It's gonna be somebody in the collector's office.
Can I ask a question, though?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, is, is the man not giving you enough in your budget? Is that why? You just wanna get more money? I'm not being disrespectful, but is that what it's about? Because we don't have enough money in our budget? Because we're paying all the fees?
Well, we're looking at trying, we're looking at trying to find ways to look at affording an assistant planner.
Oh, okay. But right now, the man is funding enough money?
We, through the general fund, which do have enough money in the account for the legal advertising, it runs close. This year's running pretty good. Last year was really close. We had to almost do some, some transfer to cover. But I will let you know, based on the average, an average variance costs $400 in the application fee. Of that, approximately 175, almost half of it, is strictly the legal ad, and those keep on going up and up. So I would like...
Can you tell me the section again, the authorization of all that?
Do we have to follow this time?
No, 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 no.
Chapter 44, 53G and a half. Well, what I would like to do is, under that, you have to put it in your procedures, that you will set up the deposit account and how that's done. So I would look at drafting a section under the Zoning Board of Appeals procedures for you to adopt.
I'm just not certain what authority we have to do that.
You have it right here.
Well, I want time to look at it, though.
I know.
No, no, we're not voting on it tonight. I'm just trying to get the information out. You're gonna write it, or you're gonna have Corporation Council write it?
Well, I was gonna write the, I was gonna draft the, the language for each of the boards in their procedures, and then give it to Corporation Council.
Okay.
I know, for instance, CCON, what they do is they actually take the application in, they advertise it, and they bill you right then and there, before you can be heard.
That's the same thing as what this is.
But we don't get back to having to give anybody a check back.
Yeah, that's...
They bill you full the amount of money. If you have an ad for a variance or a special permit, they put it in the newspaper, and then they bill you what you...
They send, they send the bill. That's what happened to me.
You cannot go forward with your variance.
You go pay it, come in with the payment receipt.
Otherwise, otherwise, no, they collect it. CCON collects it.
Well, they collect it?
They collect it, but they give you the bill from the newspaper, and you pay it. And if you don't pay it, you don't go forward.
You pay the newspaper bill?
Yes. You pay the newspaper bill. You got an application fee too, but you pay the newspaper.
Newspaper, you pay the publication.
You pay the publication bill.
Well, this is, this is a similar way of doing it. We just, we just collect it.
I mean, I don't know about taking people's money and giving people's money refunds. I just, I don't know about that. But if it's done...
I would like to make a motion to have this, whatever the proposal is, in writing prior to when we are going to be voting on it, with some notice.
A meeting.
It would be on agenda.
It would be on the agenda.
I'm just bringing up the issue of what we like...
So we have time to look at it. I was gonna look at it. Carolyn's asking.
I don't want it the next meeting, and then we have to sit here and get it handed out to us. I would...
I agree with it. I don't know. I think that's how it has to be.
Thank you.
I think Bill understands it, too.
Yeah. And now, is the man gonna cut his budget to us because we collect the money? So what happens then?
No, no, well, I don't know. It's a policy. We don't want that to happen.
Well, somebody better talk to the sixth floor. I know disrespect to Bill, Mr. Roth or the mayor, but I don't want them to turn around and say, well, you're collecting this money, which we've been provided to, so we're cutting your budget. Now, you don't get an assistant planner, and you're losing someone.
Don't point.
I apologize. I don't mean to point, but it usually starts at, you know, clerks and things like that, before, uh...
Not gonna do my snake, bro. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Bill on his proposal?
No, I'm...
Okay, do we have any citizen's input? Anybody sign up for anything tonight?
Nope.
Do we have minutes from the April 18, 2019 meeting?
Nope.
Okay. So there's nothing to waive the reading. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, motion.
Motion second. All those in favor? Floor of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and now closed. Thank you.